It's nine o'clock, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice as our Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first item is to approve the agenda for today, August 7th. Is there any additions, directions, deletions?
Also need.
A second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We need approval for Monday, July 31st minutes.
I read through them, everything looks good. Anybody have any?
Nope, I have the red wall.
Through Monday, July 31st, 23 minutes.
Sir, a second? Oh, second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item what? What? First item on the agenda is the Des Moines area community college presentation. If you guys, I don't know who all wants to come up, just want one, we can pull a chair up and kinda everybody get close. And we'll do introductions as well.
All right, thank you.
I'll start it off. Stephanie Houseman, Carroll County Supervisor.
Scott Johnson, County Supervisor.
Mike Anderson, County Supervisor.
I'm putting fire in county auditor.
Rob Dixon, DMAC President.
Cindy Scaterico.
Jane Miners, County Supervisor.
That's all us from Carroll County, bro. Jim Gossett, board trustees.
That's all us, DMAC Advantage Site Director.
Go ahead, Zach.
Zach, yeah, Carroll County. In IT Director, Carroll County, almost.
Thank you. Well, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Usually everybody makes me stand, so this is the joy that I don't. But DMAC's been around since 1967 years, but I'm the first one that's been an eighty born island, so I'm very proud of that. I'm in my twentieth year. So this year, I'm trying to get around to all the supervisors in the district and just kind of talk about the college. Last year, I went to all the city councils of the cities where we had sites. So this year, I'm hitting all supervisors. You're the fourth or fifth one, so it's just a great joy to meet you all, and we really appreciate all you do to support us. I know Jim Gossett's on my board and filling Jim Knott's shoes. We're big shoes to fill, but Jim's done a great job. And of course, you've met Jen and Joel, so they do a great job here. Just going about the college, we serve, we got the largest land area of any community college in the state. We're the central Iowa. I call it the sweet spot of Iowa. We have six fully accredited campuses, then six more centers, including the one we're just opening now in Templeton. We try to be within driving distance of everybody within our area to make sure that we've got accessible education. We're the largest community college in Iowa by far and always have been. We're very proud of that, but again, given the population of central Iowa, it makes sense. We celebrated our fiftieth year in 2016, and we really have reaffirmed our commission. We're here to help students, help the employers of our area and the communities throughout our area. And what I always say is, we've got a vicious statement, but our real goal is world domination. We're no different than any other business. We have to work hard and run hard to make sure we're successful, and because of our people, we're doing a good job. We serve about thirty-three thousand credit students every year, twenty-two thousand non-credit students. We have students from every county in the state. Ninety-seven percent of our students come from Iowa, ninety-five percent of our students stay in Iowa after they graduate. A great return on investment for Iowa. And again, it makes sense that most of our students would stay here because not only the great universities they could transfer to, but the great jobs we've got. Jen runs our Career Advantage, which is our concurrent enrollment. You can't quite see the slide, but our numbers of high school students taking college credit classes grows every year. It is a great opportunity for young people. Number one, it's quality college education. Number two, it all transfers to a university. And number three, it's free. The legislature's done a great job of helping make sure that we can move students ahead. This year, we had eighty students graduate from DMAC with their two-year degree the same week they graduated from high school. Many of our students leave high school, at least a year's worth of college. That saves them a tremendous amount of money, particularly with this college debt being the way it is. Market penetration, rent means more broke, percentage of fifteen to fifty years old individuals that are going to college. So there's where we were in 2000, there's where we are in 2010, and then 2019. We're getting a lot of market penetration throughout the district, and DMAC is not only well-known, but as we provide more services throughout the area to all of our students. Academic programs, we have 226 degrees certificates, diplomas. If we've got a program where we can break even, we'll offer it. When a program gets to the point where we're low on enrollment, whatever, we close it. We run like a business. I worked for Iowa State University, worked for the University of Florida, Great Land Grand School with great missions. But we really run like a business, probably harder than anybody else. Our top majors, our largest group of students that are here for the first two years of a four-year degree, then health science, criminal justice, manufacturing, computers, and business are next in size. Every college wants DMAC graduates. We're the only community college in the world that Cornell articulates with. They have over thirteen thousand applications for their four hundred and fifty openings every year. This year, they'll take ten students from DMAC, so we're very proud of that partnership. Iowa State, Iowa, you and I, and every private college in the state's a great partner, and we're the only community college in the Midwest that Tuskegee University articulates with. Again, our students go, leave us, go on, and do very, very well, and everybody wants our graduates. We work on our strategic plan like many organizations, so we want to focus on all of our stakeholders, net students, communities, and employers. We have to work with our people, clean up our internal processes to make sure we're financially viable. I mean, we need to make sure that we run a tight ship and don't have any issues. Guided pathways is something fairly new. Many colleges and universities just had a cafeteria where people wandered in and often got lost. Now, we've moved all of our academic programs into ten academic pathways, so that if you're interested in health, but you don't know what you want to do in health, you can enter into the health pathway, and then over the first year, we put you through a one-credit class where it helps you choose your major. And then second, you begin to explore all the areas of health that you can do at DMAC. We want to help people get on a path, stay on a path, graduate, and have a good degree. And when I meet new students every year, I said, how many of you are undecided? About half the room will raise their hand, and then I'll say, okay, half of you are undecided, the other half are wrong. Because most students, and I started out to be a veterinary, never even came close. So you never know where you're going to end up, and we want to just make sure that we give students the opportunity to do what they really want to do. A few of our college successes. One of the things I'm very excited about are college and career transition counselors. The legislature gave us money two years ago as a state to partner with K-12s to hire transition counselors. Most high school counselors, and actually probably in all the grades, their caseload is more than it probably should be. They deal with mental health, discipline, et cetera. They really don't have the time that they want to spend helping students choose careers, colleges, et cetera. So here, we partnered with two K-12s for each one of our transition counselors. We've actually got twelve now. They're DMAC employees, but their job is not to recruit for DMAC. Their job is to help a student do whatever they want to do. Forty percent of high school students in Iowa or more do not go on to college after they graduate high school. That is way too large a group, so this group really helps them make sure they take the paths, understand where they want to go and move forward. So we're hoping we get more legislative funding next year, because we're working with about twenty-six of our fifty-four K-12s right now, and we want to expand that to provide more support for our students. Dennis Alba, one of Iowa's billionaires, his only degree after high school was with DMAC. This is the evening he and his wife gave us a million-dollar gift to renovate our culinary program. We've got one of the best culinary programs in the world. We bring French chefs here in January. We send our students to France in May. It's an exceptional program. This went from an ugly block building to a beautiful center on our Ankeny campus. Carl and Penny Moyer, he runs Carl Chevrolet. This is the day they gave us a million-dollar grant as the lead gift for our new auto tech. Big demand for auto technicians throughout the area, so we built this building. It was ugly block building with no air conditioning. Now it's very, very successful. We doubled the size. And we hold the only statewide auto competition for high school students in the state. Here's four hundred and thirty students here taking the written part. And again, it's a great way to start a career in the auto industry. Our urban campus, the first majority students of color college/university campus in the entire state. Again, ugly block buildings, lots of parking lot. We just did a twenty-five-million-dollar expansion there. On the right side of the DMAC letters is the New Stadium Education Center. On the left is the Conference Center and Student Area. We've actually had plenty of partners, so we've got some nice green space there. We're very excited about that in downtown Des Moines. You and I partnered with us there. You and I has partnered with us here in Carroll for years. They actually offered the last two years a four-year degree on our urban campus. Their foundation raised 2.5 million, so you and I will actually buy down the tuition so a student can get a four-year degree for you and I at DMAC's tuition rate, which is very, very competitive. In Boone, where our athletics are, we did a twelve-million-dollar addition there in our wellness facility, so we're very excited about that. The year we built the new building, we finally won the national championships in men's basketball. They claim the new building did it. We're very excited. I've actually got one of these national rings, too dang heavy to wear. But we're very, very proud of it. The second year, we came in third in the nation, so we've got a great sports program there. And what I'm most proud about is we have more of our athletes make the national academic team than any other college or university in the state. So we're very proud that our athletes not only play well, they're smart. We just finished an addition here in Carroll, a very beautiful addition. Of course, I got a picture of Jim at the bottom, because we dedicated one of the rooms after Ian Marge. New welding classrooms, conference space, et cetera. I hope you've been in the building, but it's been a great addition to our Carroll campus. Really, really beautiful. Carroll just does so many things. Joel and Jen are having events all the time to encourage more students to come to DMAC. And again, about, I think thirty-eight percent of your students after high school are not going on to college. We're going to get more and more of them. And we've already had some great work with all of our high schools. This is just some of the partners that Joel and Jenna put together for us. I should have paid more attention to the Iowa Highway Patrol. We had an unintended visit with them the other day. I don't know if mentioning that would have made any difference, but again, we're very proud of the relationship we've got and serving the entire Carroll area. And we partner with other community colleges. We do what's best for students, even though we've got defined districts and territories. If it's good for students and communities, we work with other community colleges to make sure. We had a twenty-three percent increase in the number of students coming from Carroll to DMAC, a thirty percent increase in Career Advantage, which is our concurrent enrollment credits. Again, we need to have more and more students take advantage of the opportunity to get free college credits while they're in high school, and then a twenty-six percent articulation of graduates coming to us. Again, we've done a great job getting out in the communities and getting students in. Our Templeton campus, we actually cut the ribbon on that sometime in September. Hopefully have the governor there. It started out with a million-dollar grant from the governor, and Joel's done a great job of building it out. So we'll have one hundred and fifty seats for students coming this fall, so it's a great opportunity. We, politics, it's something we can't avoid. Every presidential candidate's been on DMAC campus. They had Trump there and everybody for the last fifteen years. We give them all a presidential medallion. When they win, it's a brass medallion made by our students. Joe couldn't be there, so I gave the medallion to Jill Biden when she dropped by campus. You know, they all talk about community colleges. We want them to know what a good community college does and how successful we are. TSA, those friendly people at the Des Moines Airport, or any airport, actually. So TSA came to us in 2011 and wanted us to create a Homeland Security certificate for the screener at Des Moines Airport. Twenty fourteen, we put it online. You can see the three courses at the bottom. In 2017, the head of TSA flies in from DC, summons us to the airport, tells us there are eighty college universities across the country doing TSA training, but they're so happy with DMAC that they terminated seventy-eight of the contracts, gave us thirty-six states, two hundred and twenty airports, two hundred and eighty-five airports, twenty-two thousand agents to train. So we went from just a few states to three ports of the country. Pretty big deal until 2019, when they fired the other one. Now we've got all fifty states, four hundred and forty airports, forty-three thousand agents to train. I mean, right here in Iowa, we've got the only community college that TSA works with, and when I walk through any airport, they all recognize DMAC. TSA's so happy with the Homeland Security certificate, they pay for the tuition for their agents. And if any agent doesn't have a two-year degree, TSA will pay their way through DMAC online. We have two hundred and fifty students starting this fall that will do the full two-year degree. You know, and I always refer to our faculty members as fire breathers. I mean, they work hard. And the guy that runs this program, the ex-police, when he loves doing reports, TSA loves reporting, so we're pretty successful. You and I, we partnered with them on a cybersecurity program. We're very proud of that relationship. Iowa State, and I mentioned that all universities love our students. A student can come to DMAC. If they know they're going to go to Iowa State, they'll be automatically admitted to Iowa State. They can actually live in the Iowa State dorms and be a full-time DMAC student. So we're very, very proud of that relationship. They get an advisor and counselor from day one, but all the universities want them. I mentioned the cybersecurity. We were the only community college or college or university in Iowa that's been designated as the National Center for Cyber Design. As I always say, we were cyber hacked in 2020, so I don't think that was a requirement to get this particular designation, but we're very proud. And of course, everybody's worried about cybersecurity right now, and we're a very hardened target, and we do a lot of training for others around the state. Goldman Sachs picked us seven years ago to run their ten thousand small business program. We're the first community college in the country to run a statewide program for Goldman Sachs. We've done nine cohorts. These are small companies from all over the state that come in and get a mini MBA in business development. We're using the Babson College curriculum. Very, very popular, and as I mentioned, we partner with other community colleges, but we run the program, and it's been very, very successful as these small businesses grow themselves. Kosovo, we do several international programs. I mentioned our French Chef Exchange. We've got a dental hygiene exchange with Yamanashi Japan. We've worked in Kosovo. We got the only consulate west of the Mississippi is in Des Moines for the Kosovo Consulate. I've been there three times. They love, they're most pro-American country in the world. You walk down the Main Street of Prustina, the capital, there are Iowa flags everywhere. That's because the Iowa National Guard was instrumental, and they're becoming independent eighteen years ago. It is a beautiful country. They're very, very friendly. Most of them speak English, and they like to work with Iowans. So we're very hot. We got a million-dollar grant from the Millennium Challenge Corporation to train twenty-eight women from Kosovo in the energy trades. This is the graduation day. Average GPA, three point eight. They're all back in Kosovo and now either finishing a four-year degree, or they're working in the energy trades. A great partnership with that particular group. Wind energy is big, solar energy is big. This was the day, we've got a small turbine on our Ankeny campus. This is the day that Mid-America, and that's Catherine Cooner, just gave us a NACEL for training. Again, we have real-life training for our students, and again, it's a great career opportunity right now that's only going to continue to grow. The legislature's been very good to us. They've given us a lot of buckets of funding for specific things. We work with them to make sure that students have the funding they need to get into some of these great careers. And not only credit programs, but we've got a lot of non-credit short programs. If students don't have two years or a year to get a degree, we have a lot of short-term programs they can jump into and get on to work. Future Ready Iowa, this is the governor's initiative. It actually provides free tuition once you, before you have to take out a loan to students throughout the state of fifty-eight different areas. We've had two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six students of two-year draw down over seven point three million dollars in funds to help them get into these high-demand careers. I mean, the legislature and the governor have been great partners with us. I mentioned the National Science Foundation. We're one of thirteen community colleges in the United States. They picked us because they loved what we were able to do, and they want us to do more grants in sciences. So these are some of the best in the country that we're now partnered with to go after some of these big NSF grants. We work with the Lumina Foundation, which is the biggest foundation in higher education, or one of six colleges that they picked, and they want to showcase us and what we're doing in workforce development that can be used with other community colleges. That's a best practice across the country. Amazon picked us as the first education partner. They provide free college to their associates. We're the first education partner in Iowa that they've picked, and so we're working with them. Lot of Amazon employees throughout the state of Iowa. The governor I mentioned, she gave us a million dollars that launched our Career Academy in Templeton. Google picked us as the first college or university in the United States to pilot their software engineering certificate. They picked ten of our students. Not only did they get to go and do the certificate for free, Google gave each five thousand bucks to go through it. Joel's been instrumental in helping get this project up and running. Very successful. The second round of cohorts, they wanted to do a hundred and twenty students with eight different colleges and universities across the country. They allocated ten students, ten slots for us, but by the time they got done interviewing our students, they were so impressed, they picked thirty-two of our students. And again, the students get the certificate for free, and they also get five thousand bucks apiece to do it. Again, some of the innovative things. I mentioned Dennis Alba. Got a very nice golf course on the northeast side of Des Moines. He hosts a golf tournament for us every year, and so we've been extremely successful. Every year, we do extremely well. Last year, we netted in a one-day golf tournament, four hundred, over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All going to scholarships. He helps cover all the expenses associated with the day, so that all the money goes to students. This year, we only got four hundred and forty thousand, but for a one-day golf tournament, that is not too shabby, and it also helps us. We award well over two million dollars in scholarships to our foundation every year. In 2016, we were picked as number ten, and I don't mean number ten as the fifteenth community college in Iowa. We were picked number ten of the seventeen hundred two-year schools in the United States based on value. We're very, very excited about that, because again, we run like a business. We've got the highest bond rating of any community college in Iowa, the lowest property tax levy rate of any community college by over twenty-seven cents a thousand, and the lowest tuition fees of any college or university in the state. Forbes Magazine, every year, they rank employers, and in 2021, we were ranked number one. We're the first college or university to ever be named number-one employer in the state. Dear was number five, State of Iowa was six, Iowa was number nine, University of Iowa. Iowa State was number nine, University of Iowa was third. I mean, who pays attention to numbers? But again, we're proud of this. We take care of our people. They work hard, and they go on to be very successful. So we're the only state, again, that our college or university was number-one employer. So our brand is life's calling. It's dreamable, it's doable at DMAC. Marketing came out with this, and I wanted to pop a billboard, and I said, what it really should say is life's calling. Answer your damn darn phone, because most people don't. I mean, right now, there are such great opportunities out there for anybody to get into business. Businesses are really looking for people. They pay better than they've ever have in the past. We used to say that our best, our competition used to be a fifteen-dollar-an-hour job. That job's paying eighteen to twenty-two dollars now, so we want to continue to do well. So be happy to answer any questions you've got, and thank you for your support. Carroll is one of the jewels in DMAC's crown, and we're very, very proud of what happens here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
It was impressive.
I like the little snippets of humor in there.
How many times you practice that? Well, I've done it a few times.
I do want to say I want to congratulate you and thank you for being a partner during Carroll community, and especially Joel and Jen. And you, I think the project in Templeton's a super deal. I mean, it's going to be a win-win for not only the Carroll County community, but for the whole region. And I just read in an article, we're talking about employers are not required in college education, they were required in certificates.
Yeah.
So you guys are on the edge of that.
Well, every one of our programs is managed by a board, but the employers are hired students out of those programs. We are so well-connected to business industry, and that's what makes a difference. We teach on the equipment they want us to teach on. We teach the competencies that they want to teach. A lot of our students don't make it through their degree. I mean, I always say auto tech, fifty percent graduation rate, because Carl and Willis and other auto dealers, they'll hire them at the end of the first year. They need employees so bad, and by the end of the first year, they've got a lot of the rudimentary skills, and many of them come back and will finish up. But again, we teach to what the businesses want. So and when a student leaves us to go to Iowa State or Iowa for a year, they graduate at the same rate, with the same grades as kids who started out at those universities, and a lot of our students could not have gotten in as freshmen. But I went to Iowa State in nineteen sixty-six, and I was very seldom in a class with less than several hundred people. Our average class size is eighteen. And our faculty could teach anywhere, but they choose to teach here because they want to teach. So we run like a business, and we run hard, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else you want to add? Jim? Joel?
No, just, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. We can see Gene tonight. We're going to blow it down in Templeton, but we'll have a ribbon cutting in September. We'll make sure we get invited to.
So we can see if I say the same thing all the time. I try to be consistent.
Can you speed it up a little bit?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for the update.
TSA thing is impressive. Well.
Yeah.
I knew that fact.
Yeah, that is. Yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda is the IT department update.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
For those who don't know me, I'm the IT Director for Carroll County. So I sent out the report I had for this last fiscal year. Had a pretty busy year, as you guys have seen. Some of the common stuff that we do, I listed first on there. We've been pushing for to get rid of like the old fax style. If you remember, like you have a phone line in your house. A lot of that's gone away, especially like with these projects we're doing, there's written all that phone line out. So one of the things we are doing is we're, we have these boxes that have fax jacks on the back of them. You can feed that to them, and we can have up to four fax machines on one device. So getting rid of all the old cabling and the county buildings to do that. Website updates, obviously, we take care of that. That's job postings, agendas, department pages, and more. The courthouse signage would be like the directions, so like when you go in the elevator, like the printouts for those in the hallway, stuff like that. We try to keep those updated. Probably, I feel like the best to do is some sort of graphic sign to make something quick, so. We do web traffic monitoring. That's really anything that comes in through the internet, so any website anybody goes to, even if your cell phone connects to the network, we will know like where devices are going and talking to. We've been doing a lot of network updates, obviously. That's all software and stuff like that, and we do all the door access controls. We create fobs for people, retailers. Recently, we actually upgraded the fob, so it's all on fob, so we can go to any of the buildings, have this one fob, so that's kind of cool. Obviously, we need a phone system maintenance, so most of the county buildings have expanded out to our current phone system, which is an IP-based phone system. I think the junior's office is probably the last one, but they haven't had it so far. We just recently did the ambulance. Another thing we do, obviously, is the HIPAA policy development. We can get some training back in August last year. We have been, looked through HIPAA policy with that guy we hired, Gary Jones, last year about this time. Him and I sat down, you know, the first of June last year, it'd been twenty-two, June, July, and went through the HIPAA policy and found some things in there, which I sent a change log to the base that we had changed. We do IT security training yearly, so that's just sending out like webinars, email training. People usually believe that, and we follow up and make sure that all gets done. We do the jury trial recordings, so if I can be called the jury trial line, it's my voice on there. We make sure we update that at least once every couple weeks. We're doing jury trials. Check all the prints in the courthouse. We do a lot of the conservation meeting room supports, so whenever the conservation has a meeting out there, we have recently upgraded to a newer style like conference room with new mics, new projector and all that. So we've been kind of being onsite out there whenever I have a meeting to make sure things go smoothly and educate guests so she can help me out when I'm not there. We do the password resets, obviously, for email, IT budgeting, shared investigations. We assist them sometimes, pulling footage. You know, I've broken in here, things like that. And we do all the employee onboarding, offboarding, creating emails, accounts, things like that. I mentioned job postings, social media updates, so like the Facebook, we do most of postings for all departments on there, and. Okay, so let's move on to quarter one. We did do, you guys approved that cell phone booster project, if you remember that. We got like a forty-thousand-dollar grant for that to do like Verizon, and then, sorry, not Verizon, AT&amp;T FirstNet. And then while we were doing that, we ended up paying to expand it out to US Cellular and Verizon. I mentioned the HIPAA policy development we've been working on. Obviously, we have the HVAC project coming through. We set up a rewire for that, and we're preparing for that back in July, September last year. That's when we were originally having the talks to get it set up. Uh, and we're preparing for that back in July, September last year. That's when we were originally having the talks to get it set up. Uh, we added a microphone to a couple of the jail cameras per Pingree's request. Um, we did have that ported out a couple times by a couple different groups. Apparently, it's really hard to find somebody to do that, so IT department ended up just uh ordering the equipment and figured it out. Uh, I did go down to help with Montgomery County IT director interviews and ended up uh hiring somebody. Uh, we updated the software, the uh maps like the nine-one-one calls. So when you call nine-one-one, uh, it gives them a GPS location of where, where you are at. Um, that's something we take care of, obviously, so it's, it's a newer style software. It's a lot more accurate. Um, it doesn't have a large footprint on our end, which is nice. Uh, we did the conservation meeting room upgrade. Like I said, we, we added all new equipment up there. And then they added a TV out there for like advertisement and stuff, which is kind of cool. Uh, we approved a server in Santa Fe project for the courthouse. Uh, that was a pretty major project that took a couple months to get the changeover done, but that's all complete now. Um, then we had that uh intern come through that helped us out a lot. Uh, Adam Daniel, he's from Iowa State. Uh, he took care of like, he went around and changed out a lot of screens. Uh, mounted some computers underneath the desk and kind of cleaned up a lot of desks, uh, some of the groundwork that we didn't really have time for, so it was really good having him. Uh, we did have a period there where we were having like uh malicious attack on the nine-one-one operations center. Um, we worked, uh, with that FBI a little bit on that, and. We were able to mitigate all those numbers by walking them out, so they couldn't even call in anymore. Um, it was coming from like random places in California, um, but just spammer numbers, a lot of those people didn't buy those numbers and. Not, not sure of the intent, but um we're just here to stop it, so. We do all the county time sheet updates. Uh, that's how people generally track their hours. It's an Excel sheet. So yearly, I go through and usually touch base with everybody and get all those Excel sheets uh updated and move their base hours over and make sure they have like the, the next year's time sheet ready to go. Um, let's see, the treasurer did an upgrade on their uh credit card payment system. So they moved away from Heartland uh Business Systems to accept credit cards to be good. Uh, that was obviously through the state, but the IT department had to install those. So we got all new equipment for the credit card scanners. Those are installed, done. Um, the engineer had a camera go bad. It was up on the north side of the building. It was on that recent system we put up, so we'll find it there and place it with a little bit better uh camera. Uh, mounted a TV out of the freaky building. Uh, it would've been in the Veterans Affairs office. We walked in there on the left-hand side. Uh, we have some advertising there now. Um, and then we, we had the new employees come in through the jail and uh the new public health director that we set up. Um, domain renewals are like, uh, so when you go to our website, like carrollcountyiowa.org. Um, or carrollcountyiowa.gov, each one of those uh website names is called a domain. So we actually go and purchase all those, and that's something that we have to do every year. So like, let's say you go to type in carrollcountyiowa.gov, if you type in carrollcountyia.gov, it'll store redirect our website. Those are some common things that you need to look out for, because scammers will actually buy those alternative websites. Make a parody and then start, you know, sucking up information people put in there, so. Um. See. Obviously, every, uh, every, what is it, two quarters, and the treasurer does their tax ads. Uh, we make code for and get those posted on social media. Um, engineer had a couple services we set up for them, uh, which are going to be used on the road. Uh, didn't have a connection back to the engineer's office. Uh, that's a project we're still working on. Um, nine-one-one operations center have like a major upgrade in their closet. Uh, we had, uh. Basically, it was a mess in there. There was so much equipment in there, it's kind of overheating. Um, you know, being the sensitivity of, of equipment in there, there's really no way to ever take it down. Uh, so we had like this uh group come in that ISIS been, we kind of, while everything was live, started tearing stuff out. And if you go walk down that Tom Center closet now, it is a hundred percent better as far as we went from. You know, about four racks in there down to one and a half, so it's really cleaned up down there. And one of the issues we have, like I said, it was overheating, all that equipment out of there, we don't have the heating issues in the Tom Center server anymore. Um, so Ben Quitt, uh, my old network administrator, so I, I ended up uh hiring a new one, so we did interviews for that. We. The courthouse did get a new camera system, which we approved back in like the first of the fiscal year in June. But I didn't get the equipment until um closer to October, so that was all installed at the end of the year. Mostly have access to those and have seen those. Uh, we talked about the fax station upgrades, which I'm doing. Um, the freaky building, when we moved, uh, the environmental health over there, we ended up doing a network upgrade. That was covered under a grant, so they have all new wireless uh access points. We ended up doing four over there, and they have new switches, we ended up doing a fiber backbone in between the offices. So it's a pretty major upgrade out there, and um as far as going forward, they should be good then. Um, we started sending out business association agreements. That was something that was suggested by um our provider. Basically, that um puts some liability back on the uh vendors and stuff that we hire, uh, that they don't release information. Uh, but they do have some confidentiality when they're, when they're looking at some of the items that they may come upon when working with the county. Um. We got a new uh printer and fax machine out of the public health, and we got the new person. Uh, we have the fall election. Jail had some fax issues, but I ended up expanding the E-Fax system out there to fix that. Um, we did write a new DR plan, which that was a, also a HIPAA requirement. Um, that's basically just, uh, if. If, if we were to have a disaster on the network here, it's how we respond. And it's a good documentation how that happens, so that was, we did get that done. Um, we set up public health. They have temperature monitors for the vaccines. So that was a project we did where we set it up so it actually texts their cell phones. We only, they could only get it to work through email at first, but. Um, that way, you know, Megan or Maggie or somebody's out and about, they know the temperature. If it drops in their medicine, that's a lot of money to go down the drain if that were to expire. Um, the jail kitchen, they had new staff come on, so we had to onboard them and uh get a laptop and stuff set up for them. Uh, the comm center. Oh, I'm sorry. The comm center connection upgrade, that was for the actual server and, and sands. We ended up uh upgrading to a new style switch that it connects to, uh, which has this network equipment, just makes it up faster, in layman's terms. Um. We added a camera in the jail control room. Uh, that was, it doesn't have a microphone or anything, it's just uh video in the control room. Looks up at that desk and things like that. Um, and then we did the, which you guys approved, the courthouse, um, ER server upgrade, um, and that we're moving it out to a different area. Um, deputies had some new vehicles come through, so we did the equipment ordering for that, um, in preparation for their new vehicles. Uh, we did the freaky building signage, so uh ended up mounting a TV for environmental health in their office too. Um, and then we did the, like I said, the cameras and stuff for them. Calvin County relies on us uh for, obviously, we, we hold a lot of their um jail inmates. So we, we support like basically them having access back to our, our police database. Um, so that's something we do. We really started working on with them, and they have a connection directly back to here. Um, the sheriff went over to a different style uh warrant, so it's all on the internet now. So we had to do, um, have an e-sign cut over and set, set up all their devices for that. Um. So when they did the new jail too, uh, they put all IP uh light switches in, so this is kind of weird. So whenever a light switch or something goes out in the jail, something IT is working. Uh, we've probably had four or five of those light switches go out since I've installed it. Um, Touche Lighting told us this is something that's gonna happen. It doesn't really toss us anything. It sends the equipment for three years in place, so it must be a common issue. But for example, a light switch in the wall actually has two ethernet nets going to it instead of power. So it falls, it falls on IT to, to work on the lighting system over there too.
These are motion sensitive?
Yeah. So we, I can get on my phone and change all those settings, so it is nice to a point, but uh sometimes it's kind of a pain because another item for IT to take care of.
You can fix that over the phone, man?
Uh, I usually have to go in for that, but I use my cellphone, the Bluetooth to the controller. So, I mean, you can edit it with an app. Let's see, um, so we did. With the fax line reporting. I went through with a company for best practices just on our, our network itself. Um, they went through and basically, they, they kind of helped us on the comm center cut over. And I had them go through and just do all the best practices on the comm center, um, so we had the best connection possible there. Um. We did a bunch of upgrades out of conservation. They had, you know, their two new uh naturals come in. So we set up desks for them, uh, set up laptops, phones, all that good stuff. Um, we did do the phone cut over out there and added phone system up there. Uh, they did, they got a camera system out the conservation now, and I had mentioned the conference room that we had upgraded. Um, I did assist with ITAG twenty, uh, twenty-three planning. Uh, I uh was voted in to basically uh do it on, on the education board, so. Sarah and I both set up uh basically all of the ITAG, the education seminars for that. Um, office annual billing would be like our Microsoft Office or email. Um, I go around to everybody, uh. Cut that all out and basically say, hey, this is, you're a part of the bill for your department, and this is something we do every year. Uh, Carroll County uh came for career festivals, all fun. Um, I went down and was able to sit with the kids through that career festival, I think it was three days. And I did a presentation where I had them come in, they hacked a computer. Um, I had them set a really hard password to it, and I walked them through the motions of what, um, generally like a hacker, a cybersecurity investigator would do to break into a computer and have them do it all, so that, I think that went over pretty well. Um. Let's see, move on down here. We have. An ICAP insurance risk assessment too. Uh, ICAP is our insurance provider for um IT insurance. They came through to spend a lot of their policies and uh our network itself. Basically, make sure we have everything in place for best practices that they prefer. Um, treasurer VPN upgrade, that's how the treasurer connects back to state with their uh D O T software. We had to go touch all the computers that have to upgrade. And state had another major software um changeover for our security software we didn't care of. Um, that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions.
Without naming location or site, is the new VR site up and running?
No.
Is it on the radar?
Well, I've been kind of getting a lot of this uh new project stuff dropped on me, so I, my bandwidth has been doubtful. But I've been kind of reactive lately. Uh, we've been working with the ambulance right now, launching the new phone system up there, so after that.
And cameras?
And cameras.
And a ray camera.
Well, uh, two minutes ahead of that. And I might add some bit too, so, yeah. But, yeah, fun stuff.
Okay, I have a few things. One, can we do these more frequently, instead of just doing it all? Do like a quarterly update?
No, it was my fault. I just had been so busy last year. I generally do a quarterly report, and so that was my fault.
And then just send us. Like before like Courtney does, give it to Courtney what's gonna be on the agenda. That would be one thing.
Yep.
Um, and then a couple other things I wanted to bring up, so it just heightened my. So the nine-one-one operation is called GPS mapping upgrade. How does that coordinate with GIS? What's different there?
So the mapping itself, like whenever you call, um, GIS actually does. Like the map itself.
Okay.
So like, basically what I do is I map the calls to look at the map. GIS develops something that goes into there.
Okay.
So if that makes sense.
So it's kind of, you guys got to work together.
Yeah, so basically GIS has the overlay. They update the overlay for the counties, because if you rely on Google or any Google Word or whatever.
They're not updated.
Exactly, where, you know, GIS yearly usually does a fixed lean or, or something, or we can run a drone or whatever to get things updated. So that's why it's just a more up-to-date map for them, so.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to bring up, um, how many? Computers within the courthouse have functions on them that are outside of just roles and responsibility as a county?
I guess you have to, what do you mean by that?
Um, like.
Personal?
Yeah, personal apps or anything like that. So that's in a direct way that a hacker can get into our system, so if we could remove any of those.
Hundred percent, I agree. Um, so personal apps don't get installed. Um, the, as far as personal usage, the only thing that would ever happen would be web browsing. And we lock down web browsing. Every single packet that goes out is inspected, and even if, let's say, they installed something on their, their computer. Their computer would be shut down before the media installed it.
So it would be segregated to that one computer for running our whole system.
Exactly, and, and that's, that's what we have. Without exposing myself, I, I can talk to you all day.
No, no, that's fine.
But I, that is not a concern of mine, and the reason, another thing, you know, even with my, my RMM software I mentioned earlier. Um, that right there. I have an app on my cellphone. If you were to install a, a new app on your computer right now, I'll get a notification on the phone, so. You installed this app at this time, and this is in any way.
Is there a way even, like, to me? It seems like that would be very time-consuming on your end. Is there a way to be a little bit more efficient and effective to just have a, a program that just sends you something? I mean, you don't have to look through, oh, hey, Stephanie, just.
Well, I mean, that's what, basically what it does. Um, the, the notifications themselves are just nice because it's on my phone.
You can see what's happening.
Exactly, like I always have in, some sort of analytics on the network. Um, I can generally do anything from my phone. So like if I'm on the red or whatever, I can tell you ninety percent of the things on the network I could probably order. This is nice, so.
Um. I only have two more things. Um, the county time sheet updates. So we're gonna be looking into doing ten clocks. Um, and I've looked into a couple. Scenarios, um, and a couple systems. There's companies that can come in and do it, so where they only allow access to one person to be able to edit the time logs. And then Tyler Technologies, I think, offers it through their system. I just wanted to give you a heads up that we are gonna be looking into that. Um. Excel spreadsheets are great, but I think we need to have a little bit more accountability and, um, and. Uh. Overall, what's the word I'm looking for? Cause every, right now, every department's doing it differently. One's writing it down, one's doing it this way to have more, not transparent, thank you, uniformity.
Yep.
Across the board.
I mean, this, this is something I just inherited, obviously, too, so it's just.
I think it's, it's something we need to look at, cause it is, it is going to be an avenue we're going to explore.
You know, the sheriff's office uses something similar. Um, Dr. Johnson, he has a, he's got a program he uses that is really nice.
Okay.
That might have time to talk in, so, okay, that's all.
Uh, that's it. Oh, I was just gonna ask, Cusford's doing.
Good, very good. Uh, you know, when he started, uh, he took them off, they're familiarized, but he's been really reliable, which is good.
And you feel comfortable, so like if you need to leave, he's figuring it all out.
Yeah, um, there's some gray area, like, you know, the deputy cars and things like that. He's still, if you're young, I get it.
But that's not any, like, that's not an emergency. That can wait a few days if it had to. Well.
I mean, with stuff we had, you know, if a deputy uses internets on their car, they can't write tickets. They won't write tickets. They can mainly write them, but.
Okay, that's all I had. I know that kind of bombarded you a little bit. Does anybody else have anything?
What do you do for the jury system?
Um, so like, well, the recordings are one, so whenever you have a jury trial, thanks for calling, Carroll County. Yeah, that's, that's all my voice, so anytime that needs updating, they call me and have you do it. Um, which a lot of times will happen on Sunday or something like that, so, because jury trials are closed all the time, so.
What are you, what are you doing here three times?
I don't know.
Anybody else have any questions?
I agree with quarterly, it's nice. Yeah, like I said, I can get more of a lullson what's going on. I didn't look at quarterly, I just.
And we know with this whole project going on, it's a busy, and you're gonna have a busy year, but thank you for everything you're doing. We don't need a motion to report me?
Yeah. Um, usually we have a motion to.
Accept.
Accept this quarterly report, but.
I'll do it for four quarters.
As I say, you can.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tony. All right, item number three to review the HIPAA policy, um. Cindy, you can go ahead and spearhead this a little bit. She was. Been digging into this and doing a phenomenal job.
Well, just, I guess maybe a discussion.
Yeah.
To make sure we're all on the same page, and that I'm on the right page.
Okay.
Um, it's my understanding.
A lot of pages.
There's two hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah, okay, well, know how many pages. Cause I went to print it and I thought it was thirty-two. I'm like, oh, I can get them a copy, and it was still spooling, and then I looked over there and like.
Cancel.
So it's my understanding that, um. Dalton, you worked with Gary and.
Gary, yeah, I'm sure.
And me, okay, go ahead.
All right, so basically I sent out the change log to everybody. Um, so I think the last thing to change was like, uh, just access control documenting, and that's what Gary and I added. But before that, you guys have. But before that, you guys had a brief change of all in two thousand seventeen, it was like. Um, but one thing we did miss was, um, getting the board member names updated, I think, on the policy. So that was kind of the intent today was to get everybody's names, so it's just like Marty Danner and Jan Zer and stuff like that in there, so.
So we don't need a motion to do that. We can just update the names. If there's any change to the actual policy, that would have to have a motion.
Hundred percent.
Um, one thing I want to bring up. I know, and I want to thank people for doing this, bringing in training. It was brought to my attention, um, by a department head that they have not had training in twelve years. So I think this is something crucial we want to keep on the fro- forefront to continue going forward, that we HIPAA is important, and we want the best for our county employees and for the, the uh, public to be safe, so I want to thank you guys for keeping this and then keep it on the forefront, but Cindy, what else did you want to add?
Um, that's about it.
So, so are all the staff names need to be changed too?
It's section four point two point three.
We updated the staff names last year when, uh, you had pretty Gary Jones.
Yeah, it's way back there, for, it's section four point two point three.
What, what page is that on?
I don't, I don't know the exact page. You're gonna be scrolling a while.
Yeah.
Saw it, I was like.
I did too. It, I mean, Courtney, I don't think you asked her anymore. Um. Not correct.
No, it's maybe a, maybe a maiden name or something, I think.
The number and four two, yeah, but they
Wow.
Turning it off, so.
No. I think Courtney gave me the only printed copy.
Would you open?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe.
Control.
Oh, there you go.
What are you doing?
Um, actually, exhibit A. Is, is what it's under, the names are under.
Yeah.
Okay, it's two forty-nine.
So this would be on page, uh.
One sixty-five.
One sixty-five.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Right in the middle, change.
It's taken a minute to get there. Wait. Not one sixty-five for me.
No, me neither.
What is yours, uh?
Did you find it?
No.
Exhibit A, on the bottom, you're on one seventy-one, so.
Yeah, I know, you said one sixty-five. No.
Yeah. I know it, know it, know it, didn't go there, right?
Which is fine, uh.
I lost it.
Where'd you do that up there?
Here, got it.
That one, so the privacy officer is Megan?
Yeah, yes. As all the information.
So, did you find it? No.
Uh, that's the your public health person is, or whatever you would say is doing the privacy officer, yeah, that's it.
Let's exhibit A.
I know, I saw it on the.
Question, I'll put this on there. That's supposed to be at, at the, no, yeah, and even the address of the email, I guess, is something wrong, too, looking at that, so that's what we're wanting to do.
Do we want to take some time and not?
Do this during meetings?
Yeah. I think we need to, since this is a two hundred and fifty.
You can read that this week.
I think we should. I think we have time, maybe just a little bit more time.
Definitely make the names.
This is, hey, there's another spot.
I'm looking at all of your names, my email, and send you guys an air copy of it.
Found it.
Then you guys can.
You're right. Yeah, because we'd have to change two, three. There it is.
Or identified persons, five.
But shouldn't, right here, when you're identifying those persons, shouldn't their title be behind them too?
So I, are you looking at the email that she sent yesterday? Yeah, because I think she printed off the one, the, the whole, the two thousand seven ones of the two thousand seventeen. That's why the number got stuck on that one. If that makes sense.
Well.
Well, this is, that's attached to me.
It's okay. It doesn't really matter anyways, if we're, if we're an update and all. Yes, all she has in her copy after.
And that one can be removed, but she's not in my house anymore.
Yep.
Although she does have access to.
Okay, all, all.
You know what I mean?
I'll talk to Gary about that and see what you guys do.
And who's attending this training?
Uh, right now, whoever signs up for it.
Okay, at some point.
Make it, man, for, you need to, otherwise, why are you even doing this?
So there'll be a class, all, all the relevant people that would need it have been invited. There's a ten o'clock class, there's one o'clock class, and he's gonna make a YouTube video out of the class to train any people that miss.
Uh, it's not everybody needs it. There's not everybody has access to it, but.
Yeah, and some people.
I think maybe some of these names that are on this need to, need to be there, not some of those, but. And he'll be here on Wednesday, so we can just take a look at it then. Okay, perfect.
Training is the.
The ninth. The ninth, at ten o'clock and one o'clock, it's either or, they're both the same.
August night?
Yep. Like in today.
Only do YouTube.
I might do that too. Well, and I tell you what, if you're gonna do YouTube, it'd be nice to have them sign in, so you can hold it.
He said August ninth at ten.
Okay. It's two days.
I, I'm sure he has forms, so.
Well, I would like to know, so if somebody does do it via YouTube, who has and has not. I agree.
Well, I think they sign on, so we get a copy.
Especially since we have.
Okay, good. All right, next item is to approve papers. Um. Do you think they have any questions? I have one in department number five for the sheriff. Um, engraved hats for seven hundred dollars. Is that common? Do we do that?
I saw your boy, there's twenty hats. And they were embroidered, I don't know.
Embroidered?
Thanks, though.
Okay. I might talk to him about that. Obviously, he's, he can do what he wants in his department. He's an elected official.
Hundred and thirty thousand was a try. Yeah, I think that was happy, you're, you're two hundred and sixty thousand, so half of it.
Sure. Anyway, would you get one tailgate standard then? So you got all your, all your trucks in?
And you got your GPS?
Yeah.
Seen that?
I like their, uh, software, uh, thing.
Basically, my head, that's a, that's a one network, just that's not annual thing.
So that's not an annual? Okay, good. What about the vehicle weapons and accident? You got a replacement for that yet?
Oh, yeah.
You missed the boat, huh?
Yeah.
You, you poured a bunch of cement outside the shop?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You poured a bunch of cement out from the shop and. That, that didn't have cement, did it?
Page nine, under emergency management. Page nine, emergency management. Car wash?
She has a, EMA has a, our, that is.
Suburban, I know.
Okay, so, yeah, I said, I don't want to call it a county vehicle, because EMA is obviously under their own budget, but the vehicle is owned by.
EMA.
And this all it's all happened on the same day, eight, seven, eight, seven, eight, seven, eight, seven, seven is the day we double check.
That's post date, so we're posting the date. That's the date we're gonna write this as.
So then.
Some, a lot of those were last fiscal year, but she turned it.
I have no idea, without looking at it.
I think going forward, we're gonna want to make a note. Somehow, you know how we try to get everything to you by July first, the end of the fiscal year, so everything stays in that fiscal year. It's not handed in.
I remember that, yeah.
I know we.
Well, I'm, something like emergency management, um. Don made it pretty clear that they're their own budget, so they all know that you have a lot of, uh.
I'm just trying to make the book work easier for you.
Yeah, well, it's not a big deal. What happens is, so the money, like, if they turn in their claims in July or August, maybe in September, and it was actually for the prior fiscal year, we accrue it. We know what was actual twenty-three expenses, however, they can come out of trip for money. So. You know, you know what the dollars were, but.
Okay. I just had a question, that was a, thank you. Any more questions?
Make a motion to approve it.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I do have this report here, just for you guys to sign. Um, I re- ran it with those two that we added, uh, for the VA and for Rose. So the new total is six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Six hundred ninety-five point seven.
Yeah.
All right, next item is to approve the fiscal year Twin Court County Substance Abuse Prevention Services Agreement. Has everybody had time to take a look at this with the, the agreement we have of new opportunities?
Agreement we've had for many years.
Yeah. I think it works well.
Make a motion to approve it, because you're on the board. I'll make a motion to approve the County Substance Abuse Prevention Service Agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There's a place here for the chairs, so I. All right, last item on the agenda is manure management annual updates. We have three of them. We have for Richland Custom Farms, East Site, Section Twenty-One, Richland Township, no changes. Richard Custom, Richland Custom Farms, Home Site, Section Twenty-One, Richard Township, no changes. Falcon Finisher Farms, Section Two, Wheatland Township, added acres and used manure analysis. Mayor to committee reports.
Um, trying to go. I didn't have much last week. This week, uh, obviously did a baiting update this morning. Um. Wednesday, sounds like we have HIPAA training. Right, and Thursday. I don't know these, there's a, that Union Traffic and Grassroots Group, it's coming to Santa Maria Winder. At August tenth, six A P M.
I see.
Six A, yeah, six to eight. What's that? What was your, uh, it's a, it's a.
Is it traffic?
Yeah. Union Traffic and Grassroots Group, it's from, uh, six to eight P M, August tenth, at the Santa Maria Winder.
I can go. Uh. Really just have a safety committee update, slides of safety. Um, Dalton, I met with Dean Shady and Bill Dickey last Thursday, and, um, we did a lot of setting up training of the NeoGov, the free, uh, safety training that we have. Just navigating about that and learning how to use it. Um, Bill will return at the end of August to conduct his yearly, uh, safety risk assessment, which he's the same person that came last year, from what I understand. Um. And then, these, these two guys were really supportive, by the way, they were really good. Um, Dean and Bill will be back at some point prior to our safety meeting. Um. At the end of September to give us some tips on how to structure our safety meeting so that we can get the most out of them. And they also said they would come back for our first safety meeting, just to, just to help keep us on track, uh, so. Miss, they're just, they're offering a lot of assistance to help with our safety culture. And then, I've already talked about the HIPAA training, which I will go to. I have newspaper radio.
Where's the HIPAA training? Where are you gonna do that?
It's gonna be in the sheriff's, um, training conference, conference room, yes. Like I said, if you can't make it, he is gonna make a video, and I will, I will look into, uh, making sure that we have a sign-off paper. So everyone can state that they were trained. That's what I have.
I can go next, uh, I'll be for a couple weeks here. Uh, back on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, Steph and I met with Silver Queen. I'm sure she brought you up to date on that. I've had several conversations with, uh, City Councilman Laverne Burks and Scott in regards to their housing for projects and things that we may be looking at. Um. Basically, this last week, I really didn't have much going on, but I did review a lot of documentation, especially your tax forms that Courtney sent out. I think there's some very eye-opening things there, and you gotta look at where are these counties at and what they have going on on their outside, because
Our debt service is way good.
Very, yeah, very much. There's one county that I know their rural is way down, well, they've got this giant fertilizer plant out there that's probably take care of a lot of it, so. Um, but as far as urban levy, we are uh, fourteenth lowest in the state. On the rural, we're up in about fifty. Um. Also, uh, Sioux Land Mental Health is gonna have a ribbon cutting September up at Sioux City for their Adolescence Center. And then I did review the, uh, State of Iowa Health's Human Services, uh, quarterly report. Uh. Basically, uh, Rowan Hills is doing very well, they're, don't have a lot of problems like a lot of communities that have, they have other for services or whatever covered, so. Uh. Then, uh, this Tuesday, we got CCGP Board Meeting, and then I have a Policy Council meeting that night. And Thursday, I have a CCG. And Thursday, I have a CCGP executive board meeting, and also. I have a new opportunities board meeting that I will be doing by soon. That's my weekend.
Last Monday, I had R S V T foster grandparents board meeting. Um. On the Monday, Tuesday, got the asbestos report back and it was negative from the smoke stack that we discussed earlier. Um. Wednesday at eight thirty, had a meeting with S C H and baiting about just the progress similar to the meeting we had this morning. I did go up on the roof and look at the smoke stack. Um, August third. I called odd jobs about moving the second week of October. And, um, I think we need to finalize the scope of work for them to try to bid moving this floor downstairs. It's gonna be huge. We need to try to discuss, this courthouse is gonna be closed on a Friday, Monday to accommodate that move, or how are we gonna try to do it?
I, I don't know if there's another option, but I think we need more, one bit than two.
Absolutely.
Do we know of another? Thing is, they have to be bonded, I mean, they have to have insurance and all that too.
On Friday.
I think we need to.
It's two months out, so. Then on Friday, I went to Rhodes and looked at their claims and county claims, this week. I have. A, um. I have the HIPAA training on Thursday, August tenth. And. Tomorrow at three o'clock, there's a, um, call with the state.
The training is in the night.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Wednesday. Um. Tomorrow at three o'clock, there is a meeting on discussing cabling in Carroll County. Upstairs, the courts or maybe wanting to. Yes, run their own cable and hire perhaps Nelson Electric. And tomorrow, I'll be at the. Weekly board meeting with Gene, CCGP.
So that, that calls tomorrow, but the meeting's on the twenty second, I think. Right here. Or technology visit August twenty second, and any.
There's a call about it tomorrow.
The meeting isn't till twenty second.
Okay. Last week I had, well, first I'm gonna start with us, Region Twelve is celebrating their fifty years, um. Please join them for social hour and dinner in Templeton, but we do need to RSVP, I will be going to that. I say sit on the board, um. Then I had ISAC Legislative Committee, so what that is, is there are proposals from the whole state of Iowa supervisors can. Send in requests or ideas of legislation that they want proposed to move forward, it comes before this committee, um. And we either say it's got traction, doesn't have traction, we approve, we disapprove reasons why. If anybody would like to look at. Some other requested. Legislation, um. You know, there's a few of them that we said absolutely not, some are gonna become policy, some are gonna become objective. You guys want to take a look at it? You guys will also be able to take a look at that at the ISAC's. Spring, spring conference. Um, during the business meeting. And they all actually will send out a revised. Word document to every supervisor, I don't know if it's Word or Excel, to every doctor, to every supervisor that's updated. Um, and had baiting this morning. I am gonna attend, I'm gonna try to attend the HIPAA training on, oh, sorry, Courtney, this coming week, I'm gonna try to do HIPAA training on Wednesday. And I am supposed to have the Region Twelve Development Corporation meeting. On Thursday, and I will not be there in person, but I do have the packet for it and I revise it and I'm gonna have a conversation. And I will be gone on the fourteen. And I will not have service. So Scott is probably going to set. The agenda. You gonna do that? Courtney, what do you got?
All right, let's do it. Have anything for next week, um? Just FYI, I kind of talked to Jean about this a little bit, if you guys are planning on closing this board and move us. Um, I do have an election in November, so there are surveys starting in August that we cannot be closed. For early voting, so.
Okay.
Just have to work around those days, um, and if you need to move us, then we might just have to set up a temporary. Desk or something by the door, J S B have people, but. Hopefully we can get it done before. That date. It would be a pain to try to live in the middle of an election.
Right, starts in October, right?
It's in the middle of October.
That's when the move's supposed to happen, so.
I know, but somebody told me they're running ahead of schedule.
Well, the temp space maybe?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Be aware that if you think we're gonna close before, we might not be able to at least.
They might have to have a chair and a calendar here for one day or so. Well, I think it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of organization that this whole group needs to make.
Well, it sounds like I'm leaving a lot of responsibility for you, with zero things on the agenda, so. So far. Anything else? In order for a motion to adjourn? So both. Second, there's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I scan this?
Do you want me to just email it to you?
Yeah, you have all that in an email?
No, I don't.
Um, I sent you an invite. It should show up right on your calendar. But it's, there's one at ten, they only last forty five minutes. And then there's one at one, and then if you can't make it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We, uh, can just do the, uh. What's your call?
I may, I may try to make, because.
I'm willing to be, uh, doing that.
I am leaving the day, I'll see.
Me too.
Okay.
Comment, that's one, remember when Doyle came and talked to us about the.
Yes.